Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, the agenda is adopted. Next item is the approval of minutes of the August 12th, 2025 meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I so move.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. We now move to a period of public comment. Members of the public are invited to address the planning board. Public comment is not intended to require the board to answer any impromptu questions or take any action on items brought up during the public comment period. Speakers will address all the comments to the board as a whole and not one individual member. Discussions between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Time limits are three minutes per person or five minutes per group. Please identify yourselves so that your statements can be recorded. And seeing as how there are no members of the public here, we will move on to new business. First item is review of the Dare Health and Human Services lighting plan submitted by Low Wire Technologies. And you want to make your presentation?
My name is Daniel Parsons, co-owner of Low Wire Technologies. Appreciate this opportunity. First time ever presenting something for the board, so thank you for your grace and allowing me to do this. So what we have in submitting, and I guess you have a copy of the prints that show some of the lighting values that were done by us. I think you have that. And I believe in some areas, I understand that ordinance is a maximum of four value on the lighting levels in areas. And we do have, per this design on paper, we have a number of areas that are significantly brighter than that number, that four candle foot value. And just in looking at it, this is one example of what we're trying to overcome. I was tasked with replacing the lighting. And you can see by this that there is in some places as much as 100 feet between the lighting fixtures. So trying to maintain lighting levels in an even fashion, we've worked with Tony on many projects over the years. We've worked together for 15, 18 years for different projects on the Outer Banks, designing and retrofitting on the backside of some and correcting a lot of mistakes that have been done in the past, and also providing the community with lighting that tends to hold up better. We're unique on the Outer Banks with our marine environment, and there's a lot of products and designs from outside the area that just don't work well here. So my focus is on making stuff last and building stuff that'll still be there for 15, 20 years from now. This particular project is a challenge because there is a significant amount of trees, vegetation there that knocks down, if you look at this, every place out of the 29 locations, I think 13 of them don't have, or it's between 11 and 13, don't have trees around the light poles. The rest were built and designed to where the trees have engulfed the light fixtures. The director, Mr. Lisette, had concerns, safety concerns. This borders residential neighborhood on one side with a street between them and the residential neighborhood. So you have some street lighting that would be anticipated on a street level. And then throughout the parking lot, they back up to shopping center. And vegetation there, there's a solid wall of trees. And there's a, there's quite a collection of belongings in that area. And it is a concern. In preparation for me coming in and replacing the poles, Dare County sent their maintenance people over to cut back significantly the amount of trees and underbrush that they have there. In this particular installation, the existing lights that were there had no directional operation to them. They were simply a light bulb and it showed out 360, and they were not full cutoff. So what we're replacing these with is a full cutoff. And I'd like to allow Tony a few minutes. I think I'm probably at the end of my three minutes here. But I'd like to allow Tony an opportunity to speak to you. He can, and he may take the opportunity during your dark sky conversation to help expound on some of these ideas that will help you get good lighting and balance that with security and also a policy that doesn't upset the neighbors too much. But in trying to find that, we have two different, you have an option before you that shows lighting without the foliage calculated in. And I can tell you that you're not going to get the spread out between the fixtures in between the poles that you see reflected here on the paper, simply because of the amount of vegetation. So when you take that into account, from across the parking lot, you're not going to be able to see much of the fixtures at all. You don't see much there now. We are going back, there's two fixtures on each pole. There's actually two fixtures up there at the top of that pole. Can't see either one of them in this light. Not even if I tried. They're buried, buried up here. You can, you can see the top of the pole, see the pole in the middle of the picture when it goes up. I think there's part of one fixture right there. And these are a glass bulb on the bottom of these. They don't do anything for luminaire cutoff. There's no luminaire cutoff on what was there. What we're proposing does have 100% cutoff. So there's no light above 16.
Is this the fixture you're proposing?
That's the fixture, yes, sir. Yes, sir. So it's a full cutoff luminaire. I don't know if there'd be any questions, but I do see we have some values, and I assume that's the concern that you would have on the values that are above four on this print. Is it enough of a concern that you feel these fixtures are going to be buried in trees? Mr. Lisette's chief concern was the safety of his employees leaving that building in the winter months after dark. At 5 o'clock, it'll be dark, and he has a genuine concern about safety of his employees being able to make it to their cars. The employee car parking lot is all the way around on the east side and backs up to the shopping center parking lot where there is a significant amount of folks that just hang out. And they're trying to, like I said, they did clean away trees, trying to thin down the hiding spots and open that up a little bit more. But that also opens them up to view the back of the shopping center there. So it's kind of a number of challenges there they're trying to eliminate and mitigate.
So you referenced that they did some landscaping work and some thinning. Did they trim any of the trees that are in the parking lot where the light fixtures are? Or do they plan to?
They did. Yes, sir, they did. I walked through with the head of Dare County's Maintenance Department. Forgive me, I don't remember his name, but they, he, there was concern about trimming the trees. I originally had it involved in my quote. They said they wanted to do it in-house, of course. So I walked through with them. The design of this pole that was there was located approximately four feet back. You can see in this picture about four feet back from the curving that you see on the print there. And the light fixtures went out to the sides. They actually come up and loop out to the sides. We're going to, Tony and I have worked with a different design of a fixture. We're actually going back with one fixture, and it's a three-foot shepherd's arm. And we're going to aim that away from the tree, pulling the fixture out. And then we're going to use a type, a type two, type five, type three, on the interior, which is shoots out towards the sides. So we'll push lighting out towards the sides, and we're swinging it arm three feet away from where the pole base is. There's also, I was asked if we would to move the poles up to two feet closer to the curve to get them away from the trees. They were just buried in the trees. Some of these poles are just totally encompassed. I couldn't even get the poles out because they're so engulfed with these trees. So to answer your question, those have been, trees have been trimmed. And I told him, if you can give me two feet on either, just start at the tree, come out at about a 45-degree angle, just clear out everything around the trees as best as you can, and we'll try and take the fixture away from the trees.
And are you putting in new poles as well?
Yes.
Okay.
That was really the drive behind this. The original poles were a metal pole and they were on a concrete base. The concrete bases were only about a foot. I don't, I don't know how they would have met the wind rating. Certainly wouldn't meet it now. The steel bolts were gone. The, a number of the concrete bases are disturbed and at angles. There's no fixing that. There's no correcting that. And our response was go with a direct burial fiberglass pole to stability and wind rating. It meets all the criteria.
Anybody else have any questions?
Mr. Daniel, this is a question. Do you have any more photos? Not that I'm requesting any, but I have a lighting plan on the agenda that I can zoom in and stuff like that. So if you're done showing photos, I don't know, Mr. Woody, if we could go back to the agenda that way.
Yeah, I don't have any more to show other than, I could give you other examples of how these poles fixtures are just lost.
That one's gone.
Yeah.
How high are the new poles?
They will have a fixture height of 16 feet. And the poles themselves are 16. The arms go up, and by the time you add the fixture back down to the bottom, it'll be at that 16-foot finish line.
Is that what these are now, 16 feet?
Approximately, yes, sir. Just a, just a quick review of some of those. That's really all I had. And if you don't have any more questions.
We held tonight, we're here to approve.
Yeah, I guess the only question is the couple of them that were over the limited brightness. Are they going to be adjusted?
If I could, this pole's not installed.
Okay.
There's only 29 actually. Yeah, it's a flag pole there, and then there's another pole that's indicated on the print over on the west side.
So are you going to put one there? Are you going to just leave it the way it is?
Leave it the way it is. And directly on the west side of that, there's one on the street side that's not there as well. So there's two that are shown on here that are not, we're not installing.
Anybody have any additional questions, or do you want to make a motion?
Which is the, the issue? Where's the one that's over, over the way?
There, yeah, there's quite a, there's a couple. And the max is four.
Yeah, there's a 10.3 down where P2 is.
Yeah.
Or R2.
We did, so we calculated this.
11.3 up here.
We engineered this with 80-watt fixtures on the interior and on the roadside. We put a 40-watt fixture, yeah, I'm sorry. We engineered all the interior poles with the 80-watt fixture. On the, on the roadside, you'll see lower values, and that's because we utilized a 40-watt fixture there. I do have a reengineering that we did utilizing 40 watts on the entire property. I don't have that digitally. I do have it here, and I can give it to you. But these values in between poles are down below one. So you've got to balance between security, life, safety issues, security women walking across parking lots after dark.
Well, it looks like those values that are excessive are right at the pole itself.
Yes, sir.
It's not going out over adjacent property or anything.
Yes, sir.
My name is Tony Gomez. My company is Bright Ideas Lighting. I'm here local. And I've had the privilege of doing lighting here in town of Mania for years. The fixture type that we're calling for here in this particular project is the same fixture we provided for Manio Commons under pole lights and also over in Magnolia. So we did, we did those about two years ago, I guess it was. So it's the same, that bell-shaped fixture. And what makes, simply put, the term full cutoff really implies, first, they used to call it community-friendly lighting, and then it was dark sky lighting, which it is. But it's as simple as this. No light, this horizontal plane at the bottom of the fixture, no light goes above that plane. And simply put, that's dark, that's full cutoff. Anything, anything that goes above it is not, could be called semi-cutoff. But we always use full cutoff in almost every project we do. So that's, that's about as simple as I can put it, is trying to define what full cutoff is.
Hey, I appreciate the object lesson. That really helps, actually.
Well, yeah, you know, I've got this thing where I can do this. That's how I'm Hitchcock. To your point about the excessive foot candle levels at certain spots, when you have a full cutoff fixture, you're going to have a bright spot directly below. And that's just the nature of the beast. I've done lighting here locally on Roanoke Island. I did all the lighting for Judicial Center, for Lost County Park Lot. And you're always going to have a brighter spot at the bottom. Once you get away from that bright spot, it starts to diminish quite, quite quickly. So if need be, we can do things to make that, if four is the, you know, the, if that's four where you have to be, it can be done. But like to Daniel's point, we always think about safety and about having lighting where if you are a pedestrian or a vehicular, somebody in a car, you want to know where your next point is. They call it wayfinding. So having that little extra bright spot helps in that respect. This is not like a shopping center or a car dealership. It's not symmetrical at all. You've got a lot of curbs out here, a lot of potential trip hazards. So having that little bit of extra light, I think is beneficial. But if need be, if we need to tweak it down to meet whatever the criteria of the ordinance is, we can do that as well. But the one where, for example, these lights were 80-watt fixtures on the interior. If we go to a 40-watt fixture, like the ones we have put for Exeter Street along that front there, along the roadway, essentially you're cutting that foot candle value in half. So for example.
But then, then you'd lose, as soon as you get away from it, you start dropping down below four. So you'd be way down when you get up there.
Yes, sir, that's correct. That is correct. So it does. Once it starts, once you get away, whether it's a symmetrical throw, or in this case, like Daniel had mentioned before, on the interior, we're using a distribution called type three, which gives you some four light and also some lateral light as well. Along the roadways, we use what's called a roadway distribution called type two. And that's more of a, just kind of a lateral thing. So it's good for walkways and roadways. But if you want it to drop like you, to your point, if you do cut it in half, you're going to get half the light everywhere.
You have dark spots in the parking lot.
Yes, sir. That is correct. And there's really no way around that. Because you're spacing like Daniel had mentioned, some spots over 100 feet, that's asking a lot of a fixture that's only 16 feet in the air. If it was 25 feet in the air and we went with a lot more horsepower, then we can achieve that. But that's just not the way it is. As far as this? Well, yeah, a lot of times when we were talking about dark skies, I've been doing this for a long time. People say, well, we want the lights to be, you know, even if it's full cutoff, what you'll find is depending upon the surface of the ground, whether it's concrete or asphalt. If it's usually with asphalt, it doesn't reflect light very much. So you do get darker skies, for lack of better terms. If you're, if you're using concrete or a lighter colored surface, you're going to get some balance. And there's no way around that either. That's just a, that's just the way it is.
Yeah, well, this is an asphalt parking lot.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, that's correct.
Any, any questions?
You might have already addressed this, but is there a type of warmth or coolness to the light, or are they?
These, I believe, are 4,000 Kelvin, which is a, it's not the bright blue, the bright, bright white. It's mostly generally accepted light for exterior lighting. Some people like to go to the warmer white. With the lower in the Kelvin temperature, the warmer it gets. Like the old warm white is like 3,000 Kelvin.
But these are, are these four?
Yeah, 4,000 is what we're, what we're prescribing. If you go to 5,000, it gets kind of bluish, and it's kind of bright. It's not, you know, and then your color rendering goes down also. And that's kind of important, too. You want to be able to distinguish colors. So that's always important.
Any other questions? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
I so move, based on the staff recommendation, yes.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Thank you for the presentation. How many foot candles on that flashlight? You don't have it rated yet. Thank you. Next item is review of the dark sky ordinance. And first, I want to thank Woody and Josh for doing all the research on all these other areas all around the country to give us a little bit of background on what we might be lacking in our ordinance. Who would like to start the discussion?
If you don't mind, I can speak for a second. I know Mr. Kevin and Mr. Woody are going to, and are going to hear this for a second time. But back at our, I think, two park meetings ago, it was recommended we take a look. And that's what this table is. Like you said, it's from every city across, not every city, but a couple cities from across the United States and close to us. And that's what these just were. I wasn't, the objective seemed like to gather information. And that's what this, what I meant for this to be was just many, a multitude of different things that other towns did because I felt we were at a point, especially with park and planning, to kind of get back into this and revitalize it and clean it up a bit, like everyone has pointed out. So, but I've actually called some of these towns. I called Malibu, California. They, they left, I left them a message. But I actually called Fredericksburg, Texas, and he said that when they built in to their ordinance, a clear dark sky message, that people actually started moving there. And that's because there's a way to become dark sky certified. And this is, it's just a thought. I haven't brought this up to Mr. Kevin officially or the commissioners. But I'm hoping that there, there might be a way for us to do that because from me and Woody's research, it seems like we already have a lot of the meat and the nuts and bolts to the ordinance. And cleaning it up a bit and adding a few things would maybe push us over the edge to getting that certificate. And what we'll probably talk about here in a second, a big part of getting that certificate is education from a website. A lot of these towns, like Malibu and NAGSET, have excellent websites. So that's, I just kind of wanted to use these two meetings as an opportunity for you all to say what you like and what you don't like, what you want to keep and what you want to put in. And on that note, at Park yesterday, they had five things that were important to them and that they wanted me to bring up to you guys. The first, and Mr. Billy Parker was here, he spoke yesterday, and he was big on this point as well. We want to make sure the process for getting lighting plans approved is clear. I know there was some frustration with the Pearl. I think that was before my time. So we want to make sure the process is clear. They wanted to emphasize string lighting. Not saying now, but this is stuff that they brought up. Education, like I just mentioned, warm and cold lighting. Because the difference between a warm reddish brown light and a bright blue light is, is a major difference, especially, we saw that picture a couple, I think, last meeting. And it's huge. And I think that's it from Park. But yeah, I just wanted to hear what you all think.
The only thing I would add, I was at the meeting, is that there was, I think, a general recommendation that minor changes are needed to update the ordinance. No one there at least was looking for a major rewrite of the ordinance. And just some clarification going from the LED, or from the light bulbs to the LED bulbs, there's a difference. We need just to update that. And then education was very important for, I think, the members as well. Once we get this cleaned up for an education program, maybe similar to NAGSET or something on our own.
Interesting, when you talk to Malibu, that they have, based on what Tony said, about 4,000 for the parking lot stuff, they have a maximum allowable of 3,000. So got some dim lighting in town.
Malibu, I understand the political dynamics of California, Malibu versus Mania, North Carolina. Malibu was very restrictive, and they had a lot of rules. So I thought that, I want to share this with the media board, but they had, you know, it seemed the lighting, they had lighting curfews, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, 11, 11 o'clock. Yeah, 11 o'clock, you got to shut all the lights off.
People would react to, I was talking to Trump, the lights around here. But the acreage lighting zones, there's a lot of interesting things.
Anybody have anything else?
That's coming back to the other project. You know, obviously the reason we have lighting and light bulbs, I'm concerned it's safety and security. And I know the town of Ainslet had a problem at one point because it was dark, the site they're talking about, and the trademark was so bright, people up to illegal activity could sit at the back of the trademark, or not trademark, the.
Speedway.
Speedway, yeah. And see the cops coming from, you know, pretty good distance, and then move back into the darkness to hide. And all kinds of dark spaces under the trees apparently to stash morbid and whatever. And so sometimes more light doesn't mean it make it more secure. This, you know, your eyes adjusted right here, but it looks darker next to it. So more even lighting is, not brighter lighting, but words that, fancy glasses.
You have anything, Bill? Randy?
You know, I think, question of process, who would take responsibility for the kinds of amendments that the staff, council, or some groups of us, if that's the direction that we choose?
Yeah, I think, you know, what we need to do is definitely update it because the ordinance was written before LED lighting. And, you know, a lot of the newer technology that's out there. So we've just got to incorporate those things into what we have. Because as far as a lot of the requirements that we do have for brightness and everything else, it's pretty much in line with a lot of these other jurisdictions. So we just.
Yeah, our ordinance is all in lotage, right?
There's some reference to LED, but it's vague, just to the reference. You know, I would just recommend that, at this point, maybe the staff can put together the changes they would recommend to the ordinance. And at our next meeting.
We can discuss them.
We can discuss those and approve.
Add or delete.
Yeah.
Yep, sounds good. If you're okay with that, Josh.
And then once that is done, I think an education program would be very important to develop that. The trust is considering that, and along with working with the town. So I think if both groups can work on that together at some future date, I think would be a great thing.
Yeah, okay. Once we get it all put together, the idea would be to let the public know about us, so people are aware of it when they go ahead and change a light fixture or go ahead and build a new, you know, something on their property that they conform with the requirements.
So just to clarify, in the, in the next month, staff will work on, I'm going to say reorganizing and updating our lighting ordinance, including LED lighting. Is it the board's preference that we put in warm versus cold lighting? Or would you all just rather organize first, see how it looks, and then add stuff later?
Oh, I don't, we can take.
If you want, go ahead and put it in there.
Yeah.
If y'all don't like it, I can get rid of it.
And then we'll discuss it at the next meeting. If somebody says, no, no, I want hot lighting.
That'll work.
And then.
When you put in lighting, is that something that you discussed, warm versus cold? Is that pretty standard?
I know that if you go to, you know, we can hear you, but you're not on the record.
He wants to record it because.
The town clerk isn't here to.
First of all, let me just say this, and I'm being sincere. If you folks need some further assistance on some of these things that you're considering as far as dark sky programs, I'd be more than happy at any time to try to.
Really appreciate that. Thanks.
To contribute whatever I can. It's funny because, Josh, I was talking to Chris over at Town Nagshead, and he has really done a great job of putting together, he has this dog and pony show that is really kind of cool. But he's doing, he's really gone full guns on the dark sky initiative they have there in Nagshead. That said, but if I can be of service to you folks in any capacity, please let me know because I would more than welcome it. Going back to your point, you can go, any of the light fixtures can be available in different Kelvin temperatures, 3,000, which is what the maximum allowed, like in Nagshead, for example. 4,000, we can do 5,000 even. But, and then a lot of these things now are field adjustable. So you can actually tweak them in the field. I find that 4,000 is a nice, comfortable light for exterior lighting. Most of the projects that I have done here locally, whether it's Coastal Studies Institute, all their parking lots, everything's 4,000. But if you, if you have a desire to go to a warmer light, you're not going to suffer from a standpoint of color rendering because these lights are also available in a, not to be technical, but in a high color rendering index. The higher, the more accurate it is simulating true, like your outdoors. So if you wanted to go to a warmer light for sake of this, I guess for lack of making it a little more cozy, it's warmer, it's got a little more yellow in it. Again, typically I use 4,000, but you can, you know, this is something I'd be happy to help you with. So.
Thanks for your input. That's really helpful. Do we need to make a motion to recommend that Josh get everything ready for the next meeting?
I so moved.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Put the work off on Josh.
You know, by lunchtime tomorrow is fine.
Again, there probably, there probably isn't all that much actually to be done. So tweaking here and there. But the larger part will be the education program.
Well, I think that's the real important part. Once we get it put together is getting the public on board with everything.
Okay. I think there's some educational programs out there already that we might be able to borrow and get a good starting point.
Okay. Next item is board member comments. Jamie.
I got nothing, man.
Okay. Bill?
We're working on some good stuff. Let's just keep that up.
The only thing I've got, and Kevin, you might want to pass this on to everybody, is some of my wife's family was here for Labor Day, and we came into town, and there was a pretty good crowd. Big problem was, the only restaurant open was The Hungry Pelican. Everybody else was closed for the holiday. And when people decided that they needed, The Hungry Pelican was just packed. And when people decided they wanted lunch, they left town. So they didn't come back after they left. And I just think, you know, that the businesses probably would have appreciated if one or two other restaurants were open. So it wasn't such a, such a mob at The Hungry Pelican.
Ashley and I were talking about something about that, about this going through Main Street. She mentions.
Well, I went, I went to the bookstore to see if Jamie Anderson was there because I know she's on that committee, and I was going to let her know right then and there before we left town. But she wasn't there. She had somebody else running the store.
It was after Labor Day.
What was?
The store, the bookstore was up.
Oh, the bookstore was open, yeah. And all the businesses seemed to be doing well. But the disappointing thing was, when people decided they wanted to have lunch, they were leaving town. You know, if they didn't want to wait in line, a lot of them waited in line at The Hungry Pelican.
And may I just add something? Sure, this topic, after this was presented at yesterday's meeting, MPT had a meeting yesterday evening, and I got an email this morning from, there's a story that says that MPT would pay the $250 review fee when we submit to become dark sky certified. There's a review period where they look at everything that fee is associated with, it's going to be covered by them.
I should have, I should have mentioned this earlier. It's $250. We can send our ordinance in, and they will actually critique it in ways that, I'm not sure how, there's not a number you can call. I couldn't find one. It's just, you have to email them, I guess. So you spend $250 to, for them to critique it, they'll say, this is what we would like to see, and stuff like that. And then you would spend $750 to apply. And then I think you would have to spend more money to get the certificate. But the Fredericksburg planner was very happy with his certification and said that he's seen a visible impact on the town after they got certified. And a lot of the, there's only 63 communities in the world that are certified for dark sky, 48 of which are in the United States, and two are in the eastern United States, which is Chicago and somewhere in Florida. A lot of the towns certified are in Arizona and California. A lot of them are observatories, I guess where they have all, to look at the stars and stuff like that. And people actually moved there because of it. Or at least that's what the planner at Fredericksburg said, so.
Having that review you paid, or they did critique, and you want to put their recommendations back in our plan, I think you would be.
Use that to fine tune it. Yeah.
So I think you've got good connections with MPT and Park that are certainly on board.
People seem super excited about it. And I am too. But I'm not sure if the, if dark sky is going to say, well, we want y'all's lights to turn off at 9:30, and then we can't get the certificate, you know. So we got to see what they have to say and how, and how they would like.
Now, the other thing, I don't know how it fits into all that, but got some people in our neighborhood that like to uplight their trees, and you're shining a spotlight right up into the sky when you do that. So I don't know if that's something that needs to be written into the ordinance to do away with, which may make some people unhappy. But, but it is, it is definitely light pollution.
Would that require a Christmas exemption?
Seeing what happens on Sir Walter Raleigh. The house that I'm talking about, that uplights all year round at Christmas time, they put colored lenses over top of the spotlights, so they're red and green.
Some of the, some of the towns had seasonal lighting agreements. Theoretically, we could do, in December, you could have more lights, and that might be feasible.
I see no problem with a seasonal exemption. Randy, you have anything?
Two things. One, just following on your comment about Labor Day. My wife was downtown, and she was stopped several times by tourists asking, where can I get some food? And so.
We were stopped a lot.
Yeah. I had thought if the, if I was able to get over to the town meeting, I'd make a public prank comment. But it does seem that businesses and restaurants could talk about feeding the visitors, the residents. But I don't want to tell some company how to run their business. But it would be nice if a tourist came here and got lunch, or dinner, or whatever they were looking for, and didn't go home and say, you know, there's nothing to eat there, and I don't want to go back. I don't care how beautiful the lighting is.
Well, that's why I went into the bookstore to see if Jamie was there, because I know she's on that local business committee. And I was going to make her aware of the fact that they need to talk to the restaurants and coordinate an effort to make sure at least one or two of them are open.
The other is, and this is my, I missed the lighting class in college. Where I live on Sir Walter Raleigh, which is very close to Upper Walk, between Essex and Upper Walk, I think there is one light bulb, which is a motion sensitive light that is insensitive to motion most of the time. So it's really kind of a weird thing. And to be honest, I'm having, ever since we started this conversation, lighting, dark skies, I got lots of dark skies. Come over. But I frankly, I'm having some problems visualizing what is being discussed. And that's my ignorance. But if there are some, as you do your research, if there are some examples that you could say, here, dummy, this is what it's all about, I would say it would be valuable to me. I would appreciate that because.
It's just a real crude thing, the light fixtures that he showed that are over at the health department now, that's just a glass globe that lights up and the light goes everywhere. As opposed to this fixture that they're putting in, that all the light is directed down at the ground. You know, that's the thing about the full cutoff, it doesn't throw any uplight. And that's, that's what we're trying to achieve here.
Did they have a display that we talked about?
They have like a box, almost like a box. And within the box, they have lighting that shows the dark sky versus other.
I'm sorry, where is it?
Nagshead. That's the type of education I think we're talking about, really. It's really basic.
Yeah, because a lot of people are of the same, in the same situation you're in, but they don't understand what you're actually talking about. That, you know, you're talking about just throwing all this light up in the sky or just directing it at the ground where it's needed.
Well, I'm just looking for where the poles might be to put the lights on.
Well, yeah, you have a particular problem with no light pole.
Yeah. But that, otherwise, I think, look forward to what the staff's going to come back with, the recommendations.
But in your instance, the town would probably have to contact Dominion Power to get them to set a light pole.
Yeah, yeah. That's not happening.
The, I just wanted to remind the staff, Marcia's light is a bit unique, and that we do have a conditional use permit. And whenever a permit is asked for by the, really the individual homeowners in this case, and also by the developer, those requests normally go through Park, and certainly go through the planning.
They come here, and then we, then we approve them and send them to the order.
That's right.
Disapprove them and send them to the board.
And so I think that's important for the staff to just be reminded of that if anything comes forward. That it's a little bit different for the rest of the neighborhoods around.
Plan use development.
That's right. The, there's an issue on, there's a sign on the concession stand at the, at the COA ball field, I think it's called. And I brought this to the attention of staff, Josh in particular. And they're working on that. It's actually a permanent sign that's put up. It advertises a private business that's not located at the ballpark. And there apparently has been no approval of that in the past. So the staff is looking at it.
Does it conform to the sign ordinance, or is it non-conforming?
To my knowledge, it does not. Nobody looking at that. Get some feedback from the county as to what that is all about. And I want to thank Kevin, the road situation over the weekend with the two ditches in the road.
They got paved yesterday.
They got paved, finally, they got paved. But over the weekend, everybody was quite upset about that.
Well, yeah, you really fell into them when you drove over.
Yeah. And Kevin jumped on that, and I appreciate that.
Thank you for your message that Sunday afternoon. We've both had conversations with Ms. Tess Judge, DOT representative. She was very informed with it.
Yeah, she had DOT out there yesterday paving.
Certainly paving.
And apparently, there is going to be, the paving of the entire strip will be done. And the rumors are, it's going to be October. But it would be good, we talked about this yesterday, to make sure that we inform the citizens as to when that's going to occur. Because I came back at lunchtime today, and I stopped at the CBS, and we crawled all the way.
Oh, the traffic was terrible in town today.
It's going to happen. When they start paving, it's going to be even worse. And if we can just keep you feeling informed of that.
How will we get confirmation on those dates? Because there's some, Josh, the water sewer has to do some work. Before that paving, he's already got that scheduled for, it's going to be a nighttime operation, so we don't interfere with traffic. Still want the citizens.
Because yesterday, they had, you run it into the left turn lane and around, and they had traffic backed up.
But yes.
And that's all right.
One more thing. When you're up there, not a big deal, but the barbecue, is that, that is in town, isn't it? Or not? Carolina barbecue. Is that within the town?
I think so. It's weird over next to the county.
Yeah, I know it's weird. Some of the parcels are in somewhere. But I think that one is in. But his open sign is flashing, and they're supposed to put it on steady. He's just got to hit the switch.
Craig's is not in town. Sarkiscode is in town. Tiel is not in town.
And across the street, Dunkin' Donuts is not in town.
The bug place is in town, in Catville.
I will, I will, I'll figure out how to get up with him, and I will make a call.
Yeah, I mean, you don't need to make a special trip up there. But I just happened to notice that when I was sitting in traffic going to the post office today, it was bumper to bumper stopped, and I was sitting there watching the sign blink.
I've left a, about the sign, I've left a message with Mr. Spencer Gregory. He now runs all of Garrett County Parks and Rec. So I've left, left a message with him, and so hopefully he'll call me back soon.
Okay. If nobody has anything else, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, meeting's adjourned.